Okay, um. Motion to. Hold on. Ed, so. Please stand before.
To reply from the United States of America and the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have a public hearing on the district-wide emergency response plan.
So just a couple, we sent this to you, it's been on the, or the website. There really are no significant changes from last year's safety plan, other than change in personnel in a few places. Mr. Miller did have a couple of questions on page eight of the version that was posted on the website. And I just wanted to update you. Not remaining quite tense, but there is just confusion about what the asterix meant in the chart that's under CD hazard identification. One asterix means that or indicates that those student numbers are based on the beds numbers collected this past fall, this fall in October, so 2021. And then the double asterix indicates that that number for employees does not include custodial or cafeteria staff. And then, but also was noted that 136 was at both the high school and the elementary school. And that's the part that I didn't seem to grab in my papers, but I did send you corrected numbers earlier today. I think we just must have, must have missed, so yes, good catch. Other than that, anyone else have any questions? Again, this is something that's required by New York State. The district-wide plan is the one that we report that's public for everyone. We also have three individual building level plans. Those are confidential and are only shared with essentially those who need to know. The board all got those are confidential things. And, you know, those are the things that are shared with law enforcement. We do, we do send this to New York State as well, they approve all of that. So, you know, it's a big undertaking, though it doesn't change significantly from year to year. We still are always looking at it and thinking about how to best keep our students safe in any situation.
We have tightened it up.
Absolutely. Yes, definitely. If you think about the 20 some years that I've been in education, campuses are completely different than they were when I, when I started in Highland. If nothing else, then there's only really one way into the building during school hours through use of identification, coming in, signing in and out. You know, but that's just one, one indicator. Another would be the, that we need to do, of course, people remember doing fire drills. All of us at the table probably remember doing fire drills in our school. But we now also do for lockdown drills throughout the course of the year this fall. And we kind of try to change those up a little bit, do them at different times of the day, a little bit different circumstances. So that in the event that some sort of tragedy occurs, students understand what they need to do and teachers can develop.
Any questions for Sarah? Okay, um, student representative, vote.
Okay, I just want to introduce to you, to Maggie Van.
Van Valkenburg.
Valkenburg, right, the masks kind of. So Maggie, at this point, we're going to have her rise to do the open office by raising your right hand. You are going to recite the oath. And then later on in the meeting, she will have the opportunity just to speak to you and introduce you herself more to you. Okay, go ahead.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my position as student representative for the Highland Central School District according to the best of my abilities.
Thank you, Maggie, and congratulations and thank you for being here.
Welcome, Maggie. Okay, we now have a special presentation to review our annual independent audit. I wish so much for you all to, a great person CPA received or present. Nobody will just export it to the 2021.
Thank you, I'm sorry, we don't have a microphone, so I'm going to ask you just to speak loud.
Oh, I will, even through the mask.
Yes, you will, thank you.
I'm hogging up.
I know, I understand.
Well, the audit went well again this year. Transition to Victoria in charge appeared to go very well, and I very much enjoy working with her. As far as our audit goes, our annual review of your procedures, internal controls, and testing of numerous transactions revealed no issues. Your staff, by the way, does a great job, continues to do a great job in the business of all. Financially, your district has been in good shape, has been in it for quite a while. And to have a 4% unassigned fund balance in a general fund, we haven't had for a while. And you were able to substantially fund your capital reserve, which will help going forward with, you know, it's a fun capital project. So you won't have to raise tax money for that. The surplus that was created probably came from a couple of areas at least. One, you didn't have to spend a lot of your budget after the COVID. And then the receipt of Federal Cares Act money, which was very close to $400,000 this year. And I'm sure you're all aware of additional funds that you'll be getting over the next two years. After that, who knows? Most schools are, it's not, and I appreciate what you do because it's a difficult task to try to plan ahead, you know, at this point in time. We have schools that are actually maintaining higher than 4% fund balances because they don't know what's going to happen after their federal money drives up. So you do the best you can, hope for the best. And that's basically it. Again, everything went well. Should be in good shape for a couple of years anyway. Hopefully, a state will come through and keep you going after that, so. And you did receive all your state aides this year after the threat of the 20% cut, so that helped too. So that's basically what I have. Nothing but good news right now. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to try to entertain them.
Any questions, Ralph? Thank you.
Okay, good to see you all.
Thank you.
Be in touch.
Okay, public comments, agenda items. Any comments related to the agenda may be addressed except for personnel or specific student issues. The school board encourages public participation at its meetings. Meetings to allow for efficiency in conducting meetings and to give each speaker a fair opportunity to present his or her views. The bound shall apply to public speaking portion of the agenda. Each speaker shall state their name. Any questions slash concerns be submitted in writing with speaker's contact information, which will include name, address, and phone number. Each speaker shall be limited to a time approximately 10 minutes, which is agreed upon by the board. The board will not permit discussion involving individual personnel or students. Direct all remarks to the chair. Community members may not, all individual board members nor debate other community members' attendance. Members of the community are encouraged to also present their comments in writing. Undue interruption or other interference for the orderly conduct of the board of education business will not be allowed. Infamatory or abusive remarks are always an out of order. Do we have anybody for public comment? Consent agenda. For A1 through C5. Can I motion for two? Any discussion? Anybody need any items pulled? Home favorite?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? Five zero four.
So, Mr. President, we do have a couple of our new hires with us here this evening, which I'd like to recognize if that's okay.
Oh, that's great, we encourage that.
All right, so we have Yvonne Hausman with us. She will be an AIS math teacher taking over for Mrs. Terzky in the middle of November through somewhere around the beginning of February. So thank you for being here, Yvonne.
Thank you for having me.
And then Rosalyn Menezes is with us this evening. She's a teacher's aide at the middle school, taking over for the retirement of Karen Rovner. Welcome aboard. We do appreciate you both coming out tonight. We know this was short notice and we appreciate your time. You can stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like, but if you'd like to get home, we understand that as well.
Nothing to say this morning.
Thank you.
Well, welcome to Highland.
Have a great night.
Yeah, you too.
Good night.
Good night.
Student, and Joel, sir?
Yeah, so, um, I was actually elected as Board of Education Representative at the end of last week. So I haven't really had time to reach out to all the districts yet, but I promise you that I will do that by the next meeting. Just off the top of my head, I know that a lot of new teachers and students are really starting to create their own clubs, especially at the high school. So I know that's one thing I can tell you. I know there's a book club being started, a code meeting also being started, and I actually started my own club called Future Medical Professionals Club. So we had a good turnout at our last meeting. And I was also, I do have one question. The, who runs the Facebook account that is like for all of Highland? I was just curious, because I could definitely send information to that person about what people from the different school districts have.
So you have, you have two options there. Ulster Bosys, very specifically Mrs. Booker.
Okay.
She runs the Facebook page pretty much for the district, and I run the Twitter feed for the district. So you can send them to me and I can send them to her.
Okay.
Or you can send it directly to her, but I would love, you know, the Twitter feed last year, because of everything, kind of fell to the wayside. So I would absolutely love, and especially for our Twitter feed, I try to really focus on what our students are doing. So if you, anything you want to send, why don't we, we'll talk after this and I'll give you my number. And then you can just text it to me and we can get that back.
Okay, thank you so much.
Patrick, you still didn't get your two clocks, right?
I thought it was a requirement.
Yeah, we are a little bit outdated, actually, but wow.
So that's all I have, but if anyone has any questions for me, you can definitely reach out to me at my school email, which actually is Margaret Van Valkenburg, but without the G and the H, because it's too long.
So just ask me, I can, yes.
They butchered the end of it all.
I will send it to you.
Is everyone glad to be back in person?
Yes, definitely. I can tell by going to school, because last year we could only see half of our friends. And now, obviously, that makes sense given the COVID situation. But it's a lot better at school because the only restriction is pretty much masks and field trips, but it's, it's great.
That's really good to hear.
So if I, if you don't mind, I would also just like to mention that if you're not aware, Maggie did have an opponent. And they ran a very spirited campaign. They're best of friends, it seems like. I saw them both at the football game and they had great spirit that night. And I just want to commend both of you for the way you ran your campaigns. You were positive, you were supportive of one another, and no matter who came out on top, I knew you both, you would both be there to support one another. So there's just a true testament to what we like to see here in Highland. So thank you for being a leader in your, in your, your high school class.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. There you are, assistant superintendent, talking to the board.
So tonight, we held, earlier tonight at 5 o'clock, we held our family engagement night for our elementary students. That's when we have our AIS teachers present and meet with parents, and we wait till October, because a lot of times in September is when they're testing to find out which students are going to require AIS services. So we wait till the point where we know to start the year who's going to be getting them. So they present on how students qualify for AIS services. They talk about what happens during the services and what families can do at home to help their student. And they talk about ways that the student would be exited from the services as well. So we held that tonight at 5 o'clock. We did it virtually, so we had parents signing on, looking at the reading and, we had the reading and math teachers present. And then they had some time for some questions as well. And then we're going to put out the presentation for any student, for any parents that couldn't come tonight.
That's great.
So for the next meeting, I'll share with you, it's really for teachers, but a couple of years ago, we started a special education cabinet. And it's a group of special ed teachers that we looked at ways that we can improve our services and what we can do for our staff. And one of the things that came out of that was creating a special education handbook for staff members. So any special, they have all the information that we kind of share across as a department. So any documents that are helpful, a directory, forms that we use throughout for creating IAPs, ways to collect documentation, and anything that's going to help them write IAPs. So I think it's going to be even more helpful this year because we do have a lot of new special ed teachers and some new related service providers. So that was our task last year. Our special education cabinet did not meet as much, but we picked it back up towards the end of the year and we finished the handbook this summer. So we're going to be handing them out to teachers over the next couple of weeks. So we're excited for that. And that's a, it's a living document because things are constantly changing and we're updating and we're improving. And it gives information and documents at each of the different levels. So for teachers that were maybe in middle school and went to high school or vice versa, they'll have those documents at the ready to help them in their response. So we are very excited for that. So kudos to all the members of the special ed cabinet that have been working on that over the last couple of years. Observations will be beginning in October. I'm excited to get into classrooms and seeing all the students and all the new teachers with all the great stuff that they're doing. So we have schedules and we'll be beginning this month. On Friday, I will be attending the Mid Hudson Regional Partnership Center through Duchess Bosys is putting on a thing for administrators. And looking at how some of the behaviors and the deficits on specifically social skills that people are seeing for students just coming back. So it may be things that we are not seeing here or are not seeing here yet, but I'm interested to learn about what other people's are challenges are facing. So we can prepare for them in case we do come across them. But seeing the, and a big part of it is going to be the social skills that either some of the things that students are lacking or some things that will need some more training or reminders in practice for students. And then finally, I met with the director through Ulster Bosys today to talk specifically about things throughout the year. As, in PPS, we meet monthly, so this month, we will be meeting in person for the first time since February of 2020. So we're excited to get together. It's a good time for us to share ideas and swap stories with colleagues around the county to find out things that they're facing as well. So that will be coming up in the next few weeks as well.
Yeah, Patrick, I just wanted, Heather Ward, the very positive comment came out in regards to the Medicaid reimbursement, you know, positive, that's looking. So thank you again.
That's, our staff has been very diligent on getting that and getting consents as well. So Virginia Beezette, our administrative assistant, has been on top of that, sending out multiple consents when families together. Because it is a one-time consent, but sometimes we don't get them in return, so she's been, she's been great with that. And if people don't consent to it, you know, there's, that it is what it is. But we do try to get it so we can reverse the funds. There's a lot of work on the end of the related service providers with all the documentation to get that funding. And a lot of, you know, boxes to check with that, so they've been great with staying on top of that.
Thank you.
All right, well, I don't have a lot today, but as I try to do regularly, I just want to update you a little bit on our, what we call the direct committee. Diversity, inclusivity, racial equity committee, as you see. We had our first in-person meeting of the year last month, at the end of the month. It was really good. It was the first time we had all met in person together, so that was really good as far as being able to not just put a face to a name, but kind of a whole persona, I guess, to, to a name. And, and helped us talk through some, some concerns from last year. It really reaffirmed our commitment to the mission statement that they decided on last year. Talked about organization of the committee as well as format of meetings. We're really looking at, we're going to do one more in-person meeting next week on Tuesday, and then we'll do Zoom through the kind of winter cold months. And then do maybe one or two in-person meetings again at the end of the school year. We did have applications open for new members. That was on the website as well as social media. We received several applications, so we'll be moving those new members into the district level committee next Tuesday. But then we're also looking this year at creating building level committees as well. The middle and high school will have faculty, students, and some parents on the committees. The elementary school will be more parents and faculty, with students being used as a, kind of as needed basis since they're so young. We really talked about, you know, when, when the committee would like some feedback from students doing it more in a focus group kind of way, or going to classrooms rather than having a student sitting on a committee. So those should get up and running the next month. They will, there'll be cross membership between the building level committee and the district level committees. But we do want to be able to target the work for individual buildings because, of course, each building has different needs depending on the age of the student and different concerns. So, so that work is continuing. I, I mentioned it last, last meeting, but Harriet Meyer at the high school, one of her duties is to help facilitate and organize the work of this committee. And so she's done a great job of updating our website, so you can see the meeting minutes and all of that on the website, contact information, as well as, like I said, keeping us, keeping us organized and connected. And she's really being a liaison with students as well. And then my second thing is, we started last Friday, was our first day of weekly, weekly COVID testing for non-vaccinated staff. It went very smoothly by all accounts. I believe we had everyone who needed to come to be vaccinated. I'm still waiting for the list for the county so that I can double check, but there was no major problems anywhere. We had between unvaccinated staff and then some vaccinated staff chose to be tested as well. We had between 90 and 100 people who, who were tested. No one came back positive, so that's another, another good step. We'll be working on doing, starting the weekly testing of students very soon. The way this has worked is Ulster County is paying for the testing through a grant that they received. They then subcontracted it out. We are working with, I think it's Woodstock Apothecary. Villa, Villa D'Apothecary in Woodstock. So they send a nurse to the district to do the testing. So it's not our health staff, for the most part, that's doing the testing. The only, the only testing a health staff is doing are some of our staff who come in at times that don't fit with when the county person is here, like our night custodial staff that might need it, or our, our food service workers that might need it.
So it's just one testing location?
No, the person goes, we don't really have many that need the test at the middle school, so actually, our health office is doing that one. And then the person from, from Villa D'Apothecary has a session at the elementary school. She stays there for about an hour and then comes to the high school for about an hour.
So it's the tester that's running?
The tester, yes, yes. And it's, like I said, it worked out very smoothly so far. I believe that they're actually going to bring some vaccines with them next week. So if anyone would like to receive a vaccine, they do have the opportunity to do that. We'll see, and I'll let Joel talk about the rest of that. And I really would like to just, again, send out appreciation for all the hard work and the diligence of not only our staff, but our students as well. We have been very fortunate. We've had pretty low positive numbers, both with students and staff. I think, you know, as much as we're all a little tired of this, it works. It makes a huge difference. It's been very, very limited numbers. I also want to thank our, our staff for, you know, trying to keep social distance as much as possible so that when we do have a positive, we can really minimize the number of students who, and adults who need to quarantine. And just a reminder for those that are not vaccinated yet, if they choose to be vaccinated, if there is a quarantine situation, those who are vaccinated do not need to quarantine. And then, I'm sure everyone's reading the news, but there's a good chance that we'll be able to start vaccinating young students in November. So we're all anxiously awaiting that and hopefully that's one, one more step towards a non-COVID dominated world. But, but for the most part, again, I really want to thank faculty and staff because again, it was another year where we really didn't know what we were walking into and what the numbers were going to be like. And it has, most of the cases aren't in district, you know, spread. It's because of contact outside of the district from what we can tell.
Good question.
Sure.
I'm not sure if I missed it or not. This all takes place with the representative from Villa D'Apothecary on the stage?
Um, we did do both the high school and the elementary school. We've done, we're doing it on the stage, just because it's easy access, it's fairly private.
So did one nurse, did we supplement her with, on our parent?
Not what they're hearing. The only way that our health office staff supplements is if the employee cannot be in the building during the scheduled time that the Villa D'Apothecary person is there.
During the regular school day?
Yes, it is during the regular.
That person is on.
Yeah, so again, if it's someone that comes in at 3 o'clock, you know, they just go right to the health office to have their test rather than going to the health office.
Will that change when that person starts giving injections?
I don't know. I, and my guess is that the person giving injections will not be that person. I think they'll probably send somebody else.
Okay, so yeah, probably might be good to have an extra person in case it's bad.
I think their, I think their plan is as we start to bring students in, they will up the number of staff members. But they're also being very, they realize that the government has given a certain amount of money. So they're trying to maximize the time that that person is here and not send two people, which would be two payments and trying to minimize the number of sites. So I think once the vaccines, and I don't think there's going to be a lot of vaccines happening because it would really only be the adults. We couldn't vaccine, we could not provide vaccines for students on those weekly meetings because vaccines for students would require a parent to. because vaccines for students would require a parent to be involved.
But that leads to.
Yeah. And that leads into what, if you want to say my, or do you want me to just start talking? So I, I put this in my, in my update. So obviously, you've seen across the state, there's a campaign called Vax to School. We sent a, a letter out to parents two weeks ago, letting them know that here in Ulster County, all of the high schools in the county are participating as vaccine sites, either a Saturday or a Sunday between now and mid-November. We will be offering up our high school gym on November 14th from 10 to 5:00. And something new that came out last week from Pat Ryan's office is that anyone who's vaccinated at any one of those pod sites between the beginning of October, which I think Kingston was the first site, and we're almost, I think we're either the last site or the next-to-last site. Those names would be put into a drawing for one of two two-year scholarships provided by the SUNY Ulster Foundation. So it's just an incentive to get people out there to get vaccinated if they're on the, the edge of not knowing this might push some people in that direction. We are waiting to hear about the five-to-11-year-old Vax to School program. I am hearing that there will be something being pushed out. I don't know if that means it's going to be more sites here within the district. I did get a phone call from a local pharmacy wanting to come into the schools to help provide some of those vaccines. I'm waiting for the Ulster County Health Department to give me some more information on that because if you remember a few years back, there was a particular pharmacy that wanted to come in and do flu shots. And we were actually told that we could not do that because we would be, we would be giving preference of one pharmacy over another. So I do believe Ulster County Health Department will run some vaccine clinics, especially, this is a large population of, of children if they're going to take, if they're, if they're going to go for that vaccine. But as I told you in the very beginning, I've been pushing Ulster County to have a site down here in the southern part of the county so that our folks don't have to travel up to the Best Buy location in Kingston. As long as we can get people to sign up to say that they would do that, they would be willing to come down here. So I really hope that people sign up to use our high school for the December, or sorry, for the November 14th appointments. And who knows, by then, maybe the five-through-11-year-olds would be available and they could take those appointments as well. But that has not been rolled out yet. But keep your eyes open. I will make sure that that gets disseminated when we find that out.
Do those include boosters as well?
Sorry?
Do those include boosters as well?
Uh, well, actually, the, the high school sites were really just for students right now. So there's no booster available for students.
I was just curious about, does the community think we're a little?
Yeah. Right now, it was basically just trying to get the student population vaccinated at those sites. Just on a side note, I went for my flu shot this weekend, which I highly recommend everybody do that as well. It does not interfere with your vaccine. You can get that. And I asked about, I have Moderna, so I asked if the Moderna booster was going to be available. He seemed to indicate that it was coming soon. And, but it's going to be, it's going to be put out in sort of the same way that it was put out before. And it's going to be high-risk groups that get the booster and then so on and so forth. So.
Moderna was talking about a half-dose as a booster right now. I'm just talking.
I'm having a hard time hearing.
See, Moderna was talking about a half-dose as a booster. That was just in the news today.
Yeah.
But I was just curious. When you mentioned about having, rather than having to travel up to Best Buy, I didn't know if we were going to become a facility to help the community in that way as well.
I mean, I think the conversation right now is for, for children. But, you know, I could definitely bring that up when we have Mark Ryder from the Health Department or Neil Smoller. Neil works at the Village Apothecary and he was very, very willing to, to come and run a site to get vaccines out. So I'm sure we could get something worked up with him as well.
If we have the ability to serve the community, I'd be happy to do that with him.
I also mentioned it a few weeks ago at Rotary and asked for their support in getting the information out. So hopefully, if they take us up on it and give us a site, I'm sure we as a district would be more than happy to loan out our gym on those Saturdays and Sundays to get that done for the community down here in the southern region of the, of the county.
What are the hours again, Joel?
Uh, 10 to 5:00. And that's the same time across the county. And I believe I sent you a copy of the letter and it has all the sites listed in there.
Yes, yeah.
And Holly Brooker has done a, a nice job getting it out on our, our social media site. And it's on our district website as well. But it is not a walk-in clinic. You do need to register, just like you'd have to register if you were going to one of the Health Department sites. So you do need to set an appointment. But you can go to any one. A Highland student can go to Sawdusties if, if that weekend happens to work best for them.
It starts this Saturday?
It started October 2nd.
Oh, okay.
Kingston was the first site. Excuse me, Joe?
Is ours up live right now? Our, our Highland site?
14th.
The 14th?
The 14th of November. But the, you can register, if you go on the, I don't have the, I don't have the exact website on my brain right this second, but I can get that for you probably by the end of this meeting.
Okay.
If you go on, it's the Ulster County site where you would sign up. You, it will tell you all the locations and the number of doses they will have in each of those locations. So you can sign up at any one.
Okay. All right. I'll, I'll take a look at that.
Um, I have a question.
Yes.
I, I just told you guys about the Medical Professionals Club I started. And actually, in April of 2021, I was working at Best Buy as a medical screener for people that are vaccinated.
Wow, thank you.
So I was trying to do the same thing for our club this year and have us volunteer to do that. So I was wondering if we would be able to do that.
I will reach out to the Health Department tomorrow to see if you can do it at our, I think that'd be wonderful.
That would be really, really great.
Oh, Maggie.
That'd be great. And if you could, if you could spread that within your group and encourage people to come, that would be wonderful.
Everyone would be very cohesive about it.
I will, I'll reach out to them tomorrow and I'll be in touch with you, okay?
Thank you.
Well, right now, we're scheduled on November 14th for the high school gym. But if this becomes a five-through-11 thing, you know, Neil is interested. He'll come anytime we want him. So we could do evenings, we could do weekend, we could do the elementary gym.
What I'm saying is I know as we get into the middle sports season.
Yeah, we'll work around all of that.
Ball practices and everything up here.
And it might not need to be a gym. Right now, we were asked to commit to one weekend, one either Saturday or Sunday for this first round. And once we get into this, the winter sports, I mean, it could, it could be a cafeteria. Cafeteria becomes a little bit more tricky because the tables all have those dividers. It's just, it's more of a, you know, it's a logistical issue. So we'll, we'll work with the FizEd folks and the, and the, the athletic department to make sure that we're not impacting Saturday or Sunday. You know, but who knows, maybe, maybe the site could be at St. Augustine's School. So it's for the community. It's not, it's not a Highland thing, like Highland School District thing. It's to get the community, the, the resources.
We see the middle school, too, maybe.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think right now, we just want high school because that's what the whole county did.
Right, yeah.
Okay?
Sure.
Um, you already mentioned that. And we had discussed a couple of weeks ago, the movement of some high school sports, especially football games, to earlier in the evening. The athletic departments of James O'Neal High School and Marlboro High School in conjunction with our athletic department did decide to move the next two football games, which are home games for us, to earlier in the evening. So this Friday, October 15th, Highland will play O'Neal on our field at 5:30 PM. And then the following Friday, October 22nd, we will play Marlboro at 5:00 PM on our field. So those dates have been communicated to the athletes. It's been on our website. Holly Brooker did a nice job posting it, excuse me, on the Facebook page. So that will be the next two football games. Please come on out and support the, it was great a few weeks ago to have everyone in the, you know, have them out there again, supporting the team. It's just, it's a great night. It's a good family night. So come on out if you can. And just as a point of information, Bernie Donigan will be here at our next board meeting to present about the upcoming proposed BOCES project. So for the community, if you want to hear about what's going on at BOCES and their capital project, they will be presenting at the next meeting. Also, just FYI, the next meeting is already looking to be a pretty lengthy meeting. We have quite a few special things that we are trying to get in the works as far as some recognitions and things of that nature. And then because she's sitting here, I'm going to make a point to call out Kathy McCulloch and her department for all that they've been doing to get our students transported back and forth to school. We were having some difficulties getting some after-school activities at the middle school level and getting that transportation underway. So with the help of Mrs. Coburn and Kathy and Mr. Miller, they've gotten it so that some students can stay and start their after-school activities. So it's not been an easy thing. It's definitely a strain on the department. But Kathy, thank you very much for all that you're doing on behalf of our community. And I don't think I have anything else. Everything else I already spoke to you.
Yeah.
All right?
Now, order of dedication, uh, movement, building tours.
Yeah. So we'd like to get those on the books. You, I, I guess, what's the pleasure of the board? Would you like to have the, the meetings rotate from building to building? Or would you like to set a date where we just do all the building tours in one day? I'm pretty open to however you want to do it. If, if there's a, if it's a Saturday that everybody wants to come together, I'll be more than happy to come and do that. I'm sure that's not going to be something people want to do. But we do have to do building tours as part of the regulations. So I don't necessarily need an answer tonight, but if everyone could get back to me with what you're feeling and what your ideas are, unless you'd like to hash it all out and get it on the calendar tonight. But I think it, it gets a little bit more difficult when it gets closer to, you know, the holidays. So if we can get them in sooner. And I do think that because we are talking building project, it would be probably in the best interest of the board to be able to see some of the, the needs of the building. And we could also, it could be on a week that we don't have a board meeting if you wanted to schedule it that way. I'm almost thinking that maybe after we do the first round of discussions with the, with the building project and we hear some of the items that we're, we're talking about moving forward, maybe that would be something that we can kind of guide our, our tour to make sure that you see those items that, that are identified in the, the building condition survey.
Well, we only have one meeting in November and December?
Yes. Correct.
But they just, apparently, two meetings, two meetings ago, you did put a caveat, though, you may add more meetings.
I mean, I, I think, listen, I don't want to have extra meetings. I don't want to stay extra evenings. But I do think it's important that we spend some time in these buildings and you get a good idea of, of what the needs are. So if we wanted to schedule it, we could do it the night before a board meeting. We could do two the night before a board meeting and one the night of a board meeting. You know, I'm flexible. We can, we can work it out anyway.
I would prefer to keep them separate just so it's not so overwhelming because you're talking about a capital project. I'd rather concentrate on the issues of that one building.
Okay.
And I'm fine for extra meetings.
There was a time in the past where we met here and actually took a bus, went in school buses and rode them and route to each building and build them up.
Well, I think if we're going to do them one by one, that wouldn't probably be necessary.
Well, it meant if you want to do them one, one night.
So, so what you're saying, like one per night?
That's what I was, because of the capital.
Yeah.
Because of, I'd rather concentrate fully on that building instead of having it all blur at the end of the night. But that's just me.
But I, I think to fully appreciate each building, it's going to be a, probably a two-hour tour.
Probably.
Yeah, and that's right.
Difficulty that we had in the past is tying that in with a executive session or a board meeting.
Right, right.
Maybe personally, I would say maybe a standalone meeting.
I agree.
You do all three buildings. You could spend, stay here for three hours in a normal, like a normal meeting. I'll just throw that out there.
I'd say like snacks at each building or something. You can kind of cleanse your palate before you move to the next one or something.
Rush through when we know we have to be back for an executive session or a board meeting.
Right.
I, I was actually going to say that too, is it just seems like every time we've done, even when we've moved from building to building, you never really have enough time because you're always worried about that.
Right.
In the early, if you can really start with some people working, it's five o'clock. And then in an hour, you need to, you need to have an session or two.
Right.
Ellen, did you have, having three standalone tours?
Okay.
So we can not rush and ask questions?
And take, yeah, take notes.
Would it be possible that each board member send me what their availability is over the course of, or what days they're not available and I can try to piece it together?
I was also just looking at the calendar just real quick. So our next board meeting is the 26th of October, all right, so two weeks from today. Then the one after that is November 9th. So you could do something like November 2nd, but that is election day, just for people to make sure you could get to vote. And then the 16th and the 23rd and the 30th are all, you know, if you want to try and keep it on the Tuesday and try and get, you know, I think there is benefit in getting it done more quickly. You don't want to spread it out over, you know, two months probably, right?
Especially because I think some of the, the topics are going to lend into, or they're going to lead into some of our conversation about where we want to go with this project.
What day in November are we meeting and working?
The 9th.
The 9th?
So you would prefer to have them done by what date? All three?
Me personally, I'd, I'd love to have them done by the 9th so that the 9th, we can have some solid dialogue because.
Okay. So how about we, we send you back our available dates?
Between now and.
Up to, yeah.
I like Saturday nights.
Did I discount it? I'm sorry, what?
What day did you say?
Saturday night.
We're definitely providing snacks for that.
I can do a Saturday night.
Afterwards.
Tom Miller's going to have us all over.
I was going to say, we better have practical Tom doing it, Saturday night. Bring it on.
Okay. So we agreed to give you dates that were available before November 9th, three dates.
Would someone be willing to reach out to, to, to your?
Yeah, I'm emailing.
You're emailing now? Okay, great.
Yep.
Wow.
And it's fine.
You're welcome.
And, and just, yeah.
What's the best time? Can you make five o'clock?
5:30?
Is there any reason why we wouldn't do an empty Tuesday? One Tuesday before the 9th of November, that would be available. 26th of the board meeting.
And then 19th is actually our.
Second reelection, which is that night or.
Probably 5:30.
And then 19th is our Equity Committee meeting.
How about next week?
That's our Equity Committee meeting.
Why don't you just let me know what days and I'll just tell Heather?
One day, the other day.
Yeah, you'll just have to.
So do, we'll just look at our calendars. Yes. So 5:30, because we have to consider Heather also along with Camille.
And Mike.
And Mike. I forgot about that.
Mike's not available on some Thursdays, but that's his board meeting.
Right. So you're looking at three separate buildings.
Uh huh.
One night. Three separate times before November 9th.
Separate nights, I don't believe you're going to get a full board attendance. That's my thing. I mean, we could sweep from one night that everybody's available and.
We'll see. No, no, no. Why?
I mean, I think the other thing is if, if we tailor the, the tour to not everything in the building. And some, you know, when I used to take you around, I would take you every single place. If I just tailor it to what the needs are and maybe a couple of highlights, maybe that's how we, we do this round. And then if you want to do another round, you know, in the spring, we could do that as well. But I do think it's important that we have a, have eyes on what the, the issues are.
Yeah. I, I think to satisfy the State Department, like you just said, just hit on key areas, these buildings and then.
So maybe we could do, maybe we could do a couple in a night just for that purpose.
Right. And then if we are. And then if we are going to have further discussion for a project, maybe then rotate the building where we can focus on that particular building and whatever.
And then maybe have the board meeting there in the spring.
Have a board meeting there.
We could do that.
Maybe when we're, when we're sharing the project with the community so that they can even see.
Possible, that's an idea too.
What would be done in each building.
Right.
You have done that in the past. You've had the board meeting at the building where you did the tour.
So could we do November 2nd and just hit the building needs and do all three?
Well, what if we did two nights instead of three? Because I want to respect two's concerns.
Yeah, no, I understand what she's saying, sure. What if we did two, two on the 2nd and then this building on the 9th going into the board meeting?
So.
I need to check, I need to look at my calendar by my home.
Okay. I mean, if we're not having a board meeting on the 2nd and we did two tours, I don't know that they necessarily will be two full hours if we're only highlighting the issues that we want to look at. And then the night that it's here on the 9th, we do this building in addition to the board meeting.
But also with those other buildings, highlight some of the work that was just on, in the current travel run, to show people what was really on the way here.
In the other buildings, while we're there seeing what potentially is gonna be the next project, we can highlight and show what was just accomplished during the current project.
Which I'm prior, after, after the winter, after the winter break, when we come back and have a board meeting, which still.
Well, no, at the same, at the same time you're in there.
Oh, you're talking about the board.
This is what we just.
I was talking about the public, but you mean the board itself.
As board members.
Okay, yeah.
You know, this is what we just did and over here is what we're looking to do. By the way, just.
Well, and I do think that one of the things, just moving forward, I know it's a different topic. We're gonna talk about building project is, you know, making some videos where we're actually showing, you know, some of this stuff is not real glamorous stuff, boilers and things like that. But I think the community needs to see that. And maybe that's a project that Ulster Bosse's can help us with or even some of our high school students that are into film and, and, you know, they could marry, and, you know, that could, that could go both ways. We could show things that we've done and things that we still need to do, you know. And how great would that be if we had students doing some of that presentation? She's gonna volunteer already, look at her.
We do have a film club, actually.
See that?
So I totally asked them, I'm sure they would be very interested.
Don't commit them just yet, though.
I, yes, I.
Let's get the scope of the word together. I don't want to get their hopes up, but no, that'd be great if we could, you know, capitalize on some students. So.
I also had experience with Ulster Bosse's doing that exact thing and featuring our facilities director, explaining even, not only just showing, but explaining what the issues are and it was very well done. I think we could do that with our last project.
Yeah, we did.
I think any, anytime we communicate exactly, we might as well have the public in the board.
Agreed. All right, so tentatively for the 2nd and the 9th, to me, two tours on the 2nd, one on the 9th. If everyone could get back to me on whether that's gonna work, then we can start finalizing, finalizing those plans, all right? Somewhere, I lost the rest of my agenda here, so. Thanks for, up to, you're the.
Where's the deal?
Oh, I'm just.
You're here for the ride?
All right, that was it for, uh, new business as far as what was on the agenda. Old business, capital project update.
So the support services committee met today, beginning those conversations about the draft of the building conditions survey. Our next step is Mr. Miller, myself, Ms. McLaren will work together to marry the district identified issues or concerns with the ones that were identified from CS Arch and the building, the draft of that CS Arch building condition survey with the hope that we have something to present to the board. Actually, we're gonna present to the full support services again next Thursday and iron out some of those details so that you have, you have something in that board packet next Friday so that you can review that prior to the October 26th meeting so that we can spend some time talking about, you know, next steps. We've talked about surveying community. We'd like to tailor some of that conversation with the community around, you know, what is our, what is feasible under the, under the, the numbers that were given by Bernie Donegan's office? What is needed, what are wants, what are nice things, what are, you know, I think there needs to be a balance of all of those things. And I think that building condition survey along with the identified areas of the administration will help to guide some of that conversation. We did look into some survey software, which was quite costly. So we may be resorting to some traditional software to not expend a great deal of money to do a survey in a different way. But I do think it's important that we, as a board and as an administration, come together with what those projected needs are gonna be. Because as we heard from Bernie Donegan's office a few weeks ago, this is the time that we need to capitalize on that retiring debt. Our next opportunity looks like it's gonna be 2031 or 2032. So we need to sort of look long-term as to where we want to go, the things that we want to put in place so that we leave the district in a better place than we currently have it for the next, and I'm gonna say generation because I won't be here in 2032, the next generation of administrators and board to move forward with a future building project down the road, so. So that's where support services is on, on that. If anyone has any questions.
Anything on the existing capital project?
I have nothing further to report on that tonight. Unless Victoria wanted to talk about, we are, we have signed off on some, we might have said this at the last board meeting, the things that we've already closed out.
Oh, yeah, the elementary school, the middle school, we sent up.
Yeah, but I think we reported that at the last meeting, so.
Okay.
So how many projects are we still holding, come on?
Um, we have the high school closed out.
I asked how many projects we're still, we've got left to close out.
The high school project can close out and we've just recently begun working on closing out the project from before that, which was held up for a while. So here, we just sent a huge amount of documentation to Bernie Donegan for the prior project, trying to get that one out. I'd like to have as much closed out and done as possible before we start something new.
Which is why we enjoyed working with you.
Yes, when we're done.
Just, just so clear, we're, the 26th, that's the Bosse's discussion with their project. So we really can't have an in-depth conversation regarding our project that evening. I don't think so.
No, I think we could probably have some.
We're moving us, are settled out to November 9th again.
Right.
And then no more meetings until December. I personally think we have to start conversations this evening. I mean, we're kinda, we're spinning our wheels right now. I mean, I like to hear, you know, what Sue's thoughts are on this project, what Camille's are. I heard Ed's once before, I don't know where Tom stands. As far as what key projects you'd like to accomplish with this fund? Outside of what our building condition survey says or what the administrators put together as a list? I mean, is there anything that, that over the last few years that you've been on the board that you'd like to see implemented? Because I think that's the thing we gotta wrap our hands around. As for large ticket items, we gotta know where we are for the budget. But it's, it's not an easy process because I worked through it. I mean, we have to start dialogue, we can't just waffle through this thing. Just my opinion.
No, and they may coincide with building condition issues that we're addressing, so it is good to know.
Yeah, but I don't, I mean, if I have a wish list of a turf, of a turf field, it's not gonna be on the building condition survey. So that's something we have to start a conversation, if that's what we're looking to do. And where we're at history regards to that. I know turf field was on our original $25 million project. The steering committee after it got defeated came back and they didn't want to move forward with a turf field. And since then, I've heard community members saying, why didn't we put turf field? Well, the community didn't support it initially. So we have to look at that and we have, we have our ID here this evening. What is the feeling of our coaching staff? I'm just using that right now as, what's the feeling of our coaching staff, our athletic departments? And parents that are involved in the sport, in the student access right now. So that's one thing. I've always pushed, you know, for the last couple of years for a maintenance facility. So that's on my list and that's something that's just what we needed. Storage facilities, we invest in a lot of athletic equipment that's constantly stored outside so that the useful life of that deteriorates drastically if you don't put it indoors. We spend money on vehicles and they're all stored outside. So the useful life of those deteriorate greatly when they're stored on, you know, ground, dirt instead of lactose because it's more poison. So there's, and I'm just talking about that piece of it. But I'd like to even touch on the educational piece of it, you know. Where can we look? This is me speaking again. I'm looking for this project to be a little bit of a wow project for the community. Because like Joel said, we have two or three years left on our capital reserve. That's gonna get wiped out with this project. I don't know if we're gonna be able to, we're not gonna want to build that and have to give it back after three years for some sense. Let's make this project worthwhile to our students, staff and community.
And I think when we first started talking about it, I, my wish, desire, whether it was possible or not, was that we become, rather than being the district that's playing catch-up with all the other districts, that we become one meeting the other districts. That we do something that actually is innovative and become ourselves an example. I'd love for us to do, I know we're a small district, but I'd love to see us to do something in some field that we could make that possible. I know I expressed to you and to Joel in the support service meeting that I'm, although I fully appreciate and respect Bosse's in its full entirety, I'm frustrated that the students are taken off campus for such a long period of time, spend such a great amount of time on buses transporting there and back. I'd love to see some way for us to, I mean, we know in special education that pull-out classes are less effective than push-in classes. We know that Patrick is very instrumental in bringing the program into the district rather than busing our students out to districts. And he's actually made us money in the process rather than costing us money. I'd love to see us look at that in a greater expanse. You know, at what point can we work in concert with, obviously, we don't have certain facilities that Bosse's can provide, but there has to be a way that we can incorporate, you know, auxiliary spaces so that our students aren't on buses for two to three hours a day and ostracized from their peers because they're doing that. I think, I'm just thinking, you know, this may not be addressable in this thing, but I think it's something we're obligated to look at as a whole. I mean, is this a population that is being, being given the best opportunity that they can? I think the education process is wonderful, but is it being done in the best possible way? To them, I'm sort of wondering. I just think it's something we always look to look at.
I think if we were a bigger district, we'd probably have the numbers to support a specialized program. But I, I don't, I don't know if it would be financially doable to create a program. I believe that Rondell tried that several years ago and it was, it was good for one year, but then the interest waned, the enrollment waned, and I think they dismantled it. And so thus, thus is the reason why you have a Bosse's.
Alan has mentioned, and again, this is, and trust me, this is the logistics is, you know, we're talking with this here. How much, we're, that's the six miles away from New Falls, that's the six miles away from Marlboro. Why can't we integrate and create a sense of greater community? Because a half hour run out to Kingston, we're, you know, we're doing as, just to be able to, to work out some kind of a preemptive services here within the offices of Bosse's. I'm just wondering if something to do.
I don't, I, I see such value in their programs and it's unfortunate that you feel that way.
I'm not saying they're less than their programs.
But it's just the value, the value in what they offer to kids who want to do that career rather than college, it's.
No, Sue, my son is actually benefiting from it.
It's priceless.
My son is currently benefiting from the program and I think they're wonderful. I think he's, he enjoys it thoroughly, but he also spends two to two and a half hours on the bus every night. And so I'm just, and that's not, and he doesn't, he particularly doesn't mind. But I know there are students that feel, and it was a statement that we wrote, that when you have to leave your class and get on a bus, travel out to school and then travel back.
To follow your, to follow your bliss, to follow something that you're passionate about. I, I wouldn't mind getting on a bus if I was really like.
I'm just asking us to look at if it's best practice, that's all.
Well, I kind of.
I guess we could feel so.
I know the direction that Ed is thinking and I, and I agree with him. I mean, and I don't want to, well, maybe this discussion should be too big for now, but if what their proposal is for considerable amount of money, why can't that be invested into some of the local buildings? Where, like Ed said, we're five miles from New Falls, five miles from Marlboro. And if they do a satellite program, one in Marlboro, one in Highland, one in New Falls, I bet you, just like you said, Sue, how valuable it is for some of those students that go up there. But you would probably draw quite a few more that would want to go into that program because it's great here and there on home dishes. Bosse's did, I mean, this was a Bosse's room at one time. I think two or three of these rooms. They spent the money to put these UVAC units in here. So they had those satellite programs, I don't know why some of those went away.
I respect that you don't want to weaken the Bosse's program because it is valuable and I respect that tremendously. But I also think that as the Highland Central School Board, that we have, that it's something we need to look at.
Where I would like to see us, when you said wow, I would like to see us with state-of-the-art technology. That's where I, I want to see us spend money.
I agree with you.
For, for the students and just to put us on the map. That's what I would love to see.
Exactly, as Ed said, being in the forefront of all that. I agree with you, Sue.
Yep.
But we've gotta really move that wheel because May, if that's what we're shooting for, it's gonna be upon us in no time, like time flies by. So in order to capture all that, we've gotta move, you know, each meeting, we gotta have lengthy discussion. And with the support service bringing back what they can gather to the rest of the board to dissect and have a discussion, we've gotta move it. I, I agree, this bond is gonna be the last one in a good number of years. Joe mentioned that. Let's put everything that we think we can get into it and benefit the students.
So are you proposing to be marry the district identified issues, the CS Arch survey, plus what we would like to see?
The building condition survey is, is done on a five-year, if I can correct that before, five-year basis.
Okay.
That is something that when we put a project together to SED, they look at it and look at your building condition survey and say, oh, Highland hit on quite a few of those items, that's good. Now, we're getting 72% back at this point in time with this project, which is a good return of our, of our investment.
Probably better than where we've been in most projects aside that here.
Right, so as long as we hit on. Right, so as long as we hit on on the critical ones to that building condition survey, you don't have to accomplish every single one of those items.
Okay.
So let's hit on on the ones that are maybe labeled health and safety, maybe that's the ones you want to hit on. And then from there, go to everybody's wish list and see if we can put that all together in the project.
So when are we going to see the district identified issues or when?
You already got them.
You, you have
No, no, you're working on priority.
No.
Oh.
You have the draft of the B C F, of the B C S draft.
You would have the priority list.
You will see something after the next support services, which is next Thursday. It'll be in your confidential update or in
The next meeting.
Or if not, on the next Friday probably.
Next Friday, okay. So if we feel that something needs to be added, is that what you're proposing? We
Well, you really would have to give some cost estimates of what those were going to be to see what you have to to work with as far as your wish list.
Right.
But yes, I think, I was saying, I want you to say what your vision is, put it in there, and then we'll
Okay.
Right.
It may not have
I mean, at this point, I don't, I don't think you, I don't think you you um hold yourself back by what the cost is. Put it out there, let's know about it so that we can have conversation about it. There's no way we're going to have costs on all of these things by next Friday, but at least we can have some everything will be on the table and then it can be discussed, so I I agree that the twenty-six, we probably need to have, you know, if you have ideas now, it sounds like you have one.
That's, that's, well, that's, that's a biggie.
That's your big one. Yeah, absolutely.
I want to see us on the map, and that's, that, that thinks beyond what my, I I am not, but I know that's where the future is. And that's where I think we have to be.
Yep.
Just to expand on that, so as far as
Technology.
Technology that we already have to to kind of go to the next step, what's what's new, like out there, and
Right, cutting edge.
But we could do some of that internally, I mean, we've got to push as a board to get that done. I mean, going from the old smart boards, so I forgot what the new ones are called.
Neat, the neat, the neat, are they, are they still cutting edge?
Yeah. That's part of us with our with our budget too.
Yeah.
We don't have to wait for a a bond issue to accomplish that.
Along that line, I don't look for setting up a subcommittee where we can do exploratory research for best practices in that field. You know, and and look for, look at it, I mean.
Right.
We're going to wait for somebody else to to point out what we need, maybe we should do it on our own and 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 say, we're seeing this practice here here, and this is what we 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 envision.
I'm not, you know, I don't want to be negative here, but the board drives this bond issue, we're the ones.
Correct.
I mean, so if you're looking for something even during a normal school year and a normal budget cycle, we've got to speak up and and get it implemented. We could direct that, I mean, that's, that's us, nobody else. Joel and Sarah and Patrick can give us some feedback from what they're hearing from the staff. We have to make the move to push it forward.
Yep, now I'll jump in, so for for me, the technology in classrooms, which is N C S, not just the technology rooms, but just how we use technology in classrooms, I think could be upgraded. The media center in the middle school. And the library has changed over time to try to get more, just be, the cafeterias, you know, the kids spend time in there, making it more modern. The auditorium, I know as a parent, when I go come to concerts, people are standing up, so I'm not sure there's a way that that span that space where we can have, you know, like in the elementary school concerts, middle school concerts, we're trying to make that area a little larger. Um turf field, you know, I was a fan of that, I was proposed many years back, so I think that's still something that I've seen a different how much reduce the smaller field, we get a lot of these side of that, and then a lot of districts have had turf fields, so we wanted to be without it. So I just um, that's my shirt list. I I agree, like make it, if I did that, you know, thirty years from now, we're we're still hanging in there, you don't get that opportunity too often to do this.
Is there another we could do?
It's interesting you mentioned the auditorium because that's something as a as a principle, we were always, especially the elementary, we could never fit our folks in there. You know, and I don't know how to expand that, but I will say that my daughter went to Reinbeck High School, and they built an upper deck, like a balcony, up over that outer area of the gym. Now, I don't know if that's something we could do, but it fits a lot more people, so you might know
Everything's possible.
You might know better than me, but that would kind of go like about, I guess they call that the upper deck, uh outside the gym and the auditorium.
No, you can't, that's everything possible.
So have like seating above that that opens into the auditorium.
We built it up, everyone remembers the little school gymnasium, it was a tiny gymnasium.
Did you discuss it?
About two years ago.
We've we've raised that and made it cafeteria and two science rooms above it, you could do, you could do all that. It's unfortunate that, you know, our our middle school footprint, I don't believe we can expand on it for new addition. And I think our elementary school footprint is almost at the max where the state says you've got to have so much free play area versus building.
Right, yeah, I would say that you don't want to do room there.
We're limited. It's unfortunate, but
Yeah.
Elementary school's going up, that's all. With another second floor, some part of the building, you know, that, you know, it's like anything.
Depending on if the if the foundation was built to
That's our, that's our only option on that piece of land.
Well, there's a very small, there's a very small amount of space at the elementary school that isn't already a second floor.
The additional wing.
It's just that kindergarten section and, you know, those hallways past the the, on either side of the cafeteria. But everything else, it has a double floor. So.
There's a young lady here I'd like to hear from.
Yeah.
Maggie. Yes.
What do you think?
Okay, so
Where do we need to be?
As you were explaining all this, what I was picturing in my head is me coming back like ten years from now and walking into auditorium, giant back me, and I think, no, it's really cool. Because I know I've been in tons of those concerts, and there are always parents standing on the side, so I know what Ms. Doma is talking about. And I think that's a great idea. It sounds insane to be able to do it, but I would love to see if we would be able to do that. Um, I'm trying to think. I also can't imagine a second floor, another like addition to it at the elementary school. I didn't think that it was like something that was possible, so I think that would be great to also look into.
What about in in the in Highland Central, your experience throughout Highland Central schools? What do you wish there was or could have been?
Well, this, I'm kind of biased for this because I'm on the tennis team, but the bus garage used to be tennis courts. And now I know it's not far to travel to Tony Williams, but
But there's no place to sit there.
Yes, and I
I went last week and I watched the play and there was no place to sit.
And to go from, to to do it in a in a phys ed class or to do it in
Yes, on tennis and phys ed would actually be very beneficial because we always struggled to make a team. This year, we were actually pretty lucky because we have a lot, a lot of seniors, but next year, we're losing about eight seniors, so we'll have like five or six kids left. And to make a team, you need at least seven, but you'd like a couple extra. So if we had tennis courts or like the different areas for kids to try new sports at the high school during gym class, maybe that would get them involved in other sports, like tennis or softball or any other things like that.
Now, you said you were focusing on pre-med.
Yes, I'm I'm a fine-to-direct and then nursing program.
So how do you feel our sci, do you feel our science equivalent, our science labs, or is there anything along those lines that you think we could better serve?
Well, part of my sophomore year was cut short because of COVID, so we didn't really get to do many labs in my A P Bio class. In chemistry, we did do a lot though, it was also a little bit um off because of COVID. But I, I mean, I haven't really had much experience in bigger places where they would have better experiments and things like that, so I'm not really sure. Maybe if we were able to travel to college or something and experience any like labs there, that would be cool, if we could do field trips to go
What if I told you along the lines of Ms. Gilmore's uh technology push, that there are virtual reality classrooms? Where you could actually participate in a surgery or dissect something virtually, or, you know, it become a molecule or a virus.
That would be very cool. That would be really, really great.
Possibilities.
And a lot of like the virtual reality things, I know one of my friends who's in college, they had those that you could wear, and you would actually do labs like that. I think that'd be really cool stuff to have, yeah, for sure.
Well, that's a cool idea.
Yeah.
I like it. Well, if you think of anything else, or if your friends are thinking of anything, if you have conversation, you can email all the board, you can email us, and we'll make sure that they get that information.
Definitely.
That'd be awesome.
I'd be interested in your thoughts.
Okay, Ms. Gilmore, also. Ed, I, can I address about the project, please? So I'm from Highland, I grew up here, graduated in eighty-three. And I I got to say, I can coach here for many years, now athletic director, but I got to say, when you drive past this road now, you know it's Highland School, you have a nice marquee sign, you have a nice sign on the on the on the building. It's being maintained, it 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 looks nice. When I look at a bond, I know there's other things with classrooms and everything like that, but I think one of the things you want out of it is the appearance. You want to be, when people drive by, like, that's a nice place. We added the banners in the front and the back. Had them a long time, we finally got them up, I, to me, that, they look nice. When you go back there, like tonight, we had a game, the lights are on, the appearance is nice, and that's not a lot of money to do that. In two thousand two with with the bond, the turf, that failed. I personally don't believe it failed because of the turf, I think there was other things involved with that. I was part of the committee. Uh not two thousand two, two thousand two, there was no turf, the one in two thousand ten, eleven, twelve, around there.
Twelve, I believe.
Yeah. Um, I was part of a committee, and the committee that was there did not want to put it up. And that was fine, I was good with that. But as we go to district to district and you see, like in O'Neil, what they were able to do, roundout what they were able to do, it's it's night and death. Our field is nice, the grass is, it's it's nice, but I'll give you a scenario. We played tonight, they were able to mow it, weren't able to line it because the weather just doesn't let you do that all the time. I mean, you can't be out there mowing eight o'clock in the morning this time of year, you got to wait till almost noon time. Phys ed has really taken advantage of the turf field that's out there right now. They they they're on there every day, at first, I didn't know what they were going to do, because I know Mike and Katie, but they've been there every day utilizing that. Part of the reason they go there is because we have to maintain the other field, and they're out there maybe mowing the main field, so they can't utilize that for phys ed. And they can't utilize the track because you really don't want somebody mowing while they're while they're using the track. So I believe, I hate to say it, because I'm kind of like, I love the grass, but I think a turf field is 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 the answer. And it's just not for athletics, it also will be for physical education, definitely will be used for it. And it'll just be able to be a spot where now nobody needs to be on there during the day maintaining it like we do daily. It, you know, we have, this Thursday coming up, we had a soccer game scheduled, I'm sorry, a modified game scheduled at three-thirty for football, and then we had a soccer game scheduled at six-thirty on the same field, then we were going to come back on Friday, anti-habersity football, all all in the same field, with a soccer game tonight and a soccer game tomorrow, all on the same field. And it recovers, it recovers itself back for the spring. But going to places, I know you've been there, you know, with your son, um, O'Neil was was unbelievable. Um, I went up into the press box and it it kind of was a classroom. Because when I talked to the athletic director and the person, the other person was up there, all the music, um, they had a Jumbotron type of thing, all that was done by the kids. So it was either extra credit or whatever it was, it could have been part of a class, I really don't know. But when you walked in, it it it's nice. And and again, that's one of the things you see, you visually see something. Now, I have a question, I know you know the history, it could be for anybody. The elementary school gymnasium. Could anything be done with that area as far as making it more of a gymnasium and then a full gymnasium?
Do you mean with seating or?
No, it it's very small, the ceilings, you can't even play volleyball in there. You can't play, you can't play basketball with ten-foot baskets. So, you know, gymnasium was
And our board needs to be redone.
And this floor needs to be redone, yes.
Probably could raise that roof. But as far as increasing the size, probably not.
There's nothing that
You you might be able to go out for a salad.
You might be able to make it longer, but you're not going to make it wider.
Right, well, it's the exit
It makes it longer, you could, you could raise the ceiling on it. I I mean, this is good conversation, and I know we've we've pushed the last bond through because it was no impact to the taxpayers, so really, in the minds of the of the taxpayers, if there's no impact to their taxes in this neutral project, they're going to, for the most part, support it. I think what I'm hearing now is we want to, we want to bring in the community. So maybe another option is to look what, if we added a few dollars more to this bond, what would that impact be to the taxpayer, and maybe they'll support that. And maybe what everybody's saying, we can accomplish. Because let's face it, we're already saying, this this probably is going to be the last bond issue, de-subside bond issue this district's going to see in minimum ten years. And previous board, and I'm not, you know, putting previous board down, but when you're going back, we went every fifteen, twenty years before we had a bond issue. The tenure I've been here, we've gone through four and a energy performance contract, so. And and it really, you know, it's improved our district greatly, but we we've got a little ways to go yet. And like Frank said, Ed said
I want to thank Frank for speaking up because I, if if all of our directors came out of the departure, you know, I, whether I support the turf field or not, or whether I want to be informed, I want to be educated on what the needs are, and that's what we look to our directors to do, and so I thank you for that.
It's important, it is as a director, but it's also as a person who lived there their whole life.
Well, no, of course, but that's what
You know, over over the time that we spent money in bonds on the baseball field, we're still in the same boat we were back then. It's a little better, but not much, because we don't have, we don't have enough full-time staff to do what really needs to be done on a compound.
How long ago did O'Neil put up the turf field to you?
They have, they have two turf fields, they only have two.
But the one in the press, do can we get prices on what, I mean, roughly what they, what that cost?
I'm sure you could get that from anybody, really, right? I mean, our our field is in a good spot in the sense of, I don't believe, and you might correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe it's a complete overhaul, because the drainage and and the the way it sits is 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 already there.
Might not be, right.
You know, um
But again, again, you have to look at, because I know, I think Marlboro had to redo their carpet sooner than it was anticipated, and I believe they lost some state aid on that because of of bringing it, you know, back to where it should be prematurely. So I would, there there's a lot of scenarios and a lot of
I do know they rent theirs out a lot too, I mean, I know the weekend there's got their own.
I would like to get the big control, like you were saying, they're going to use the press box as a classroom. I'd like to find out whether we're taking, to to do all that, to change up, we just made a press, a a classroom press box or, you know, with the Jumbotron.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to insult anybody, but basically, it's a chef, and there's no insulation in it. With a door, with no doorknob, and we probably have over twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars of electronics in there.
We've got thousands of dollars of equipment in there.
Yeah.
But this is the time for us to get all of this out, and then, we we don't have much time at all to do it, but we have to get it out and and sort of sift through everything in all departments and find out what, you know, what does the community review of the top row decide this.
The other, the other thing for me, and I'll leave it, the gymnasium, I know, Al, you and I have talked about it, at the high school, one of the best gymnasiums in the area, the only thing in there is the ceiling. The ceiling is is kind of left back, when they did all the renovations in there, it was, when a new floor was put in two thousand two, the walls, everything is is nice, but the ceiling, I don't know if something can, the ceiling and the lights, the lights are bright, but the lights, if you hit it with a ball,
Yeah, it's the original ceiling from The lights in there are on the survey, on the building survey. The lights inside the gym are one of the items that was highlighted for the gymnasium, I'm going to find a survey.
Okay.
Probably new captain ceiling in there and a couple other things, we really have to attend to. Right.
Well, I mean, I guess I started this conversation a half hour ago
No, I mean, I guess I started this conversation a half hour ago, but-
No, it's good though.
I, I, I think, you know, it's maybe gonna come before you know it and, and, and then what happens is we push it, you know, we push it through without really everybody's, you know, ideas being explored to its fullest.
It's, it's a good act of conversation right now.
So that leads into, when do you wanna bring a design team in? Kind of help you along with your ideas and how they can put it on paper.
Um, because it was, you mentioned to the district to the south, listen, Marlboro having to replace that turf. Was there any indication or was it, um, not used properly, not maintained properly?
Maybe overused, I don't know.
Probably overused, as Sarah said, the place was often used by the other people.
There was stuff there all the time.
They, they let their community use it, so they probably get to support their community for that reason.
How premature was the age, you know?
I, I heard five years. But it depends on the quality of the turf that you're putting down and all that.
Five years, four, really?
Yeah, we, we, you walked on, when I walked on the turf at, um, O'Neill, totally different than what Marlboro had before.
Right.
I'm sure Marlboro's-
Technology's come a little way.
Yes, it's totally different to what's there.
We gotta fast pace a lot of this.
I just think that, you know, unless you're, you're anticipating, you know, you have, you know, additional standalone meetings to discuss the project, yeah.
I think we're gonna need to do that.
Yeah, we have to, we have to move, we have to move forward.
But every, every ideas, you know, I, I thought of all those too. I mean, they're, they're, we're all thinking of doing for, for our students.
And you know, we might need some standalone meetings just for this purpose.
That's right.
You know, with nothing else really bogging down the, the conversation.
I mean, all is not lost moving forward. We still have the potential to, uh, have capital reserve money, you know, moving into the future to pick off little, little, little things.
Really, because it sunsets in three years.
No, no, not the stuff that we have now.
You could do a new one. You could do a newer one.
New ones, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 oh, no, sorry, new, the new, the-
Refunding. Right.
Yes.
So all is not lost. We can pick off things with additional, refunding a cap, a capital reserve account.
And, and, and Victoria might know this, some districts do annual, uh, projects with some of that money that's in regard. I know Dover right now, they do it every year, Dover Plain, the school district. Every year they put out a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of capital projects just to keep up with things.
If they don't get the right kind of bids, they don't do it though. If they don't get the right bidding on it, they don't do it. And, and, I know that, that a couple of years ago.
They got, they got a budget they gotta work with and what are in their reserve or what it-
Might be sunk down, so I don't know how they, they work it, but they, they do that.
We did about a million, two million and a half kind of on an annual basis.
We don't, we've never done that here in Highland.
Well, that's why some of the, some of the items that are on this building survey can be probably done that way into the future.
Could you?
There's, there's a life expectancy on some of this stuff.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So you're, you know, all hope is not lost, it's not in doing, but-
But you need voter approval to start with and voter approval to you. You know, that's, that's a little stumbling block at times.
You wanna hopefully realize that it, it doesn't have, uh, you know, unlimited lifetime to it. That's what, you know, people have to know, that's how the reserve money is there to pay accumulate and be some, some work that has, that need to get done.
But I think the majority of your capital reserve are used to offset larger projects.
But of course we do, yeah.
But project wise, pull a little bit.
If we can't, if we can't, beyond this one that we're thinking about now, if we can't, uh, have a zero, you know, noticeably there, you know, as far as taxes raising and everything, uh, then we have, we use the capital reserve money to pick off those other things. That's all I'm saying, we can do it moving forward, as long as we constantly keep that funding.
Yes.
We got a couple of things here we gotta think about, uh, how the BOSI's project is potentially gonna, you know, affect this project that we're putting forward. What we've, what we're gonna lose in that to fund, you know, our part, our share of the BOSI's project. I mean, it's fact of the fact, we gotta do it, we have an obligation. You know?
So do we wanna discuss options as far as, um, Alan, you mentioned the design, uh, like starting to think about design firm and, and getting some of that discussed so that we can be ahead of the, you know?
I think we can make that, we can make that connection. And then that'll also put it in a point where we have to fast track what we're doing here. So that when they come online, we have something, ideas to handle.
Yeah, it's a board's decision of how you wanna go forward with the project. Cause I mean, if you're gonna bring them on, um, pre-bond, then there's a fee tax for that. So you gotta know what that fee is. And if you're gonna retain them through the project, then you gotta know what their construction fee and post-construction fee is.
Right, exactly.
I mean, those are all things that have to be looked at.
So I mean, are we ready to do that now so that we can start having those informed conversations or, you know, as you said, we, you gotta work back from that May twenty date, whatever that is. So we wanna have everything in place by-
Probably forty-five days prior or more, yeah, you're looking, you're looking at, at March.
Yeah, I would say no, later than February, we wanna have everything in place so that we can start those conversations with the community to build that level of excitement for a project. You know? He may be in our video.
Yes.
No, you, you're-
That was like the most impassioned I've heard anyone speak about a project in quite a long time. So I mean, that is convincing.
But, but you're right, Joe, you, you back it up from the May eighteenth, then whatever it is, to forty-five days because you have to have it posted then.
Right.
And then prior to that, so you, you're looking February, you're gonna be pretty much wrapped up. And I have an idea how you're gonna present it to the community. Which leaves you two months, four months. You know, and, and right now, four months and two meetings per month is eight meetings, not a lot.
Four months goes by pretty quickly.
Yes, it does. You have a holiday.
Four months ago, you appointed me on July first. So if you think back, that seems like yesterday. So four months from now, we're gonna be sitting here, we're either gonna be ready to go or we're gonna be behind the eight ball. And that's not where we wanna be. So, you know, the discussion about, you know, bringing in design folks to give us some ideas, I don't think is premature.
No, I, I agree with you.
But that's really, you folks to have the conversation, I can't.
I agree, but it's up to the board.
No, I think that, I think, we know that we're gonna need them at some point, so we manage the sub-process and then we make time. Would it be possible for, would it be, you have an air conditioner, would it be possible for Central to, uh, to organize, do that reverse engineer schedule for us? So that we have set that markers for deadlines?
Oh, yeah, no, I think we already have a tentative.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we have a-
Bernie Donigan's minute.
Yeah.
No, I, I, I mean, as far as organizing our thoughts regarding this project, you know?
So basically come up with our, our own plan for when?
Our own, like, right now, I know, uh, facilities and, and you folks are gonna be prioritizing the, the draft.
Yep.
And then so if we have a, a hard deadline by what point, we all have to get our ideas out and what point we organize those and then go to the community for ideas.
Yep.
What point we organize those and prioritize those.
I do think Bernie Donigan's document has that spelled out, but we can put it in a more, you know, it's this long and it's got charts and it's deadline, we can make it-
But what I'm hearing from everybody is that, you know, there is a wish list that could be, you know, on the heavy side that what, what is the impact to the community if we go over that tax neutral sixteen point six, sixteen point six million? But if we go to twenty, it is, you know, ten cents on the, right on a hundred, what, what is it? We, we, we could try to find that out and that could steer conversations in those directions. Now we really need the input of the community to sell the project because now it's gonna cost them ten, ten, ten cents per thousand, whatever it is additional in their taxes.
Especially with seventy percent funded. Does this one have any effect on the, on the tax gap, right?
No, well-
It'll be a separate thing.
It's an exception.
Yeah, it will. Moving forward, boy.
It'll be allowable, but it will drag us along.
Right.
No way, okay, and I think that's-
But it, but it-
Honestly, I think that's our biggest problem anytime we have the tax gap. And people will close the, the money to get back by not doing that.
Again, we know we've got sixteen point six or whatever to work with. This thing might go on up to twenty, or we might not, we might only be spending sixteen point six here with the other three point, whatever going to BOSI's. You know what I'm saying?
Either way.
We're, we're-
Either way, we stay at sixteen and, yeah, we do.
We don't have to go. We don't know that yet.
We don't know that. We don't know what, what that nudge is gonna be for, you know, our responsibility there, you know?
Well, you have the option of not agreeing to BOSI's.
Then you're still not. Or that no one's gonna come.
If you feel that strongly, we're-
No, 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 I'm not, I'm, I understand why they need to, you know, that they need to do what they wanna do. Uh, and we're, at some point can be responsible for some part of that. Uh, but, you know, we're still, we're gonna have that obligation on top of what we're trying to put together. That's all, I'm, I'm not, I'm not negating it.
No. Uh, I, I'm gonna throw, I am not, I am not, uh, thinking easy of going above and beyond it. Tax neutral. Because I'm, I'm very concerned it would be voted down. But-
Could, could well be, yeah.
All right, um, I, I think we've kind of evolved in this, we, um, have our plan.
So, just, just as long as I'm clear, because I, I'm going to take the CSR survey, which you, you sent us, Tom, recently.
Yeah.
I haven't, I would like to take the time to digest that along with the priority, um, list that we have.
And I would say, Sue, if, if, if there's something that rise, you have questions about that survey or you have more ideas, forward them on to, to all of us on, on the board, but definitely the support services committee so we can have some of that out.
Right. 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 Right, because I, I wanna get a good understanding of what's already on the table.
Right, and I think-
So we don't fall over each other.
Yeah, I believe even facilities is, is currently digesting that, so that's how fresh that is.
Yeah, and just, just-
Okay, yeah, because that's a lot to absorb.
No, and, and like you were saying about prioritizing, I think that's exactly what Joel was saying by Friday. We'll have is, uh, Pete's gonna fully digest it and they're gonna fully digest it. And they're gonna set what they see as the priorities so that we can look at it a little bit.
Not, not this Friday.
Or that, well, this, this Friday.
It's next Friday.
Next Friday.
Tomorrow morning.
Yeah, no, 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 no. No, for support services on Thursday and then hopefully you have something next Friday that, um, takes us into that, into-
You wanna drag it?
Um, at this point, really, we, I think we can, we've talked about this enough. We can, um, put this to rest, um. Do we have any public, uh, we do wanna go into an executive session after the meeting tonight. Okay? Everybody understand? Okay? We can discuss, uh, the topic that came up. Uh, uh, public comment.
Barry Ann.
Thanks for your public comment.
Kathy.
Anything?
I just wanna thank all three members of our, please.
Well, thank you for sticking with us, yeah.
Um, I have a motion to adjourn, uh, we can call both, um, directors, uh, Camille, second by your head. You were, you were a safety.